Colbert called me about what you're talking about. I'll make sure I talk to you about it.
There we go. Good afternoon and welcome. At this time, I'd like to call our Suffolk City Council work session to order. We do have one topic for discussion this afternoon, and that's concerning the Village Center zoning district. Mr. Manager, provide an overview?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. At your February 7th city council meeting, a motion was passed for the staff to evaluate the Village Center zoning districts setbacks and any adverse impact setbacks may have to abutting properties or the neighborhood character, and to bring back a report to city council. Of course, you as aware that was targeted for June. Staff has completed their review and shared reports with the city manager this afternoon. Staff will share the requested report in the near and midterm recommendations. Kevin Wine will provide the staff report. Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, as the city manager recap for you. Back in February, staff was directed to take a look at our Village Center zoning district, particularly as it relates to setbacks and potential impacts to existing property owners within the VC zoning district. A little history on the VC. The VC zoning district, it is our Village Center zoning district. It was created in 1999. That was when the UDO was adopted, and it's located within Holland, Whaleyville, Chuckatack, Oakland, Sandy Bottom, and Hobson. It was designed to preserve and encourage development that's really aimed to align with the historical and existing rural commercial centers that all of those operate as. Thus, it functions like a miniature downtown district. So, what are the issues in our review of the Village Center zoning district? One, the most glaring, and it's been discussed here before, that there are no required side or rear setbacks within the Village Center zoning districts, and the minimum lot sizes are relatively small when looking at some of our denser residential districts as well, at 5,000 square feet in size. The maximum building height is pretty excessive at 45 feet tall, and there is no impervious cover ratio, as there are in the majority of our zoning districts throughout the city. So, we've seen an influx in infill development. It's been occurring at a relatively high rate within some of our villages, and it's resulted in some new homes, new residential development that may not be seen as compatible with what existed prior. A lot of these villages date back to the early 1900s. The lot patterns reflect that, and so do the existing residential homes that you see there reflect that. Another issue is current building code requirements. Currently, there are better, more well-informed building codes as it relates to residential construction that didn't necessarily exist at the time that the majority of the existing residential was constructed within these villages. The most glaring being that they have to, the new homes have to be at a foundation a little higher to achieve positive drainage off that foundation, and that's been seen to be a direct negative impact to some existing adjacent property owners. There are some things that lie a little outside of our control as it relates to stormwater regulations, but that has been certainly a pressing concern within the Village Center zoning districts. We handle stormwater through how the state allows us to handle it, but for single-family development, it's looked at a little differently than a full-scale commercial development in which they'd be required to provide mechanisms for containing and controlling the quantity and the quality of stormwater. So, that is certainly something outside of our control, but what we acknowledge could be a perceived issue within our villages. Another issue that lays a little outside of our wheelhouse is the innovations in septic that have led to the creation of the mound systems that have allowed for potential development of parcels that would otherwise not have been suitable due to either limitations in size or their ability just not to perk. So, these are shown, just kind of show the contrast of the old versus the new in some of our developments. The top photo here is from Hobson. You can see a couple newer homes on the right-hand side of the street surrounded by some of the older, smaller homes. The one on the bottom is in Oakland on Willow. You can see three larger homes along a street that is developed with largely single-family ranches. So, this is used to kind of illustrate that compatibility issue that's come to our attention. So, in reviewing these, and then kind of setting the table with the lack of some of our dimensional requirements in our current UDO as it relates to the VC, we are proposing for consideration a separation of the standards for the VC as it relates to residential on one hand, and then your non-residential. What was clear as we explored changes, we didn't want to impact any non-residential development in the VC district. Certainly didn't want to limit any opportunities for the villages to see some economic development opportunity. However, the residential market is certainly there for the VC, and considering that the lot patterns that exist there are pretty similar to some of the existing zoning districts we have, we thought this would be a good opportunity to kind of separate those out. So, with that being said, none of the changes that we're discussing today would impact our non-residential development. It would be just for residential development within those VC district. So, first, we would create modified dimensional standards for the VC as it relates to residential. So, those things that we talked about that are lacking currently, the no side or rear setback, we recommend that we establish a seven-and-a-half-foot minimum side setback in our villages. And that seven-and-a-half is an interesting number, but it's quite deliberate in that what we've noticed with a lot of the single-family development that we see in the VC today is it's built five foot off the side, and that is to meet building code as it relates to fire separation of adjacent buildings. They have to be at least five foot off. If not, if they're closer, they would have to then put in a fire-rated wall. So, they're already building five feet back even with that zero setback, so that's why we wanted to increase that to seven-and-a-half in this instance. We believe that this would allow for a larger area to achieve that positive drainage that the building code requires, but would also allow for some natural swales to create between residential properties. Additionally, we would eliminate the maximum front setback that currently exists in the VC. Currently, that is 30 feet. You're not allowed to construct a home any further than 30 feet from the front property line, so we would eliminate that maximum allowance and create a minimum of 20 feet. That, once again, aligns with a lot of our other single-family residential districts. We would establish a 10-foot minimum rear setback. We would reduce the maximum allowable building height from the current 45 feet to 35 feet, and then we would take a look at some of our impervious cover ratio as well as our floor area ratio, and I'll get into some visuals on what those look like in a minute, but currently, there is no impervious cover ratio in the VC district. That means that if you have a lot of 5,000 square feet, which is the minimum there, in the VC, you could cover that 100% with impervious cover. So, patios, roof, driveway, what have you, you could cover all of it. So, we're recommending that we establish a .5 impervious cover ratio in the VC district that would limit coverage of the lot with impervious surfaces to 50%. Lastly, we do not have a floor area ratio established for our Village Center district. The floor area ratio is essentially the percentage of overall square footage of the building relative to the lot size. So, usually, the taller you go with a building, the higher that percentage is going to be. If you get above one, at that point, you have more square footage in the building than the lot size itself, if that makes sense. I'm going to visualize that for you here in a second. But we believe that .35, a 35% ratio, would be appropriate, essentially limiting any size of building on a lot to 35% of the overall lot area. So, what do those look like in visuals here? You have the impervious cover example on the left hand of the screen. Pretty much any area that is yellow there represents an impervious surface. Those are the ones that are touching the grounds and do not allow water to penetrate. You can see, it's not terribly difficult to cover a lot of your lot with impervious covers. By the time you have a garage or shed, patio, swimming pools will take up a lot of that area as well. Anything that is green does not represent pervious cover. So, in a lot of times, decks are elevated enough that they do allow water to penetrate, so they do not count towards that impervious cover. On the right-hand side of the screen, you have some visuals of what that floor area ratio looks like. Essentially, there are a bunch of different ways to get to the overall floor area ratio. It's stacking blocks. How can you get there? But, the quickest way is the higher you go up. The more you go up, the more square footage you're going to have, particularly in a smaller lot. So, we feel that eliminating that will, or creating floor area ratio, rather, will go a long way to ensuring and controlling the height of these structures, more so than the minimum building height, or maximum permitted building height, rather, because it really does come back to the square footage of the unit itself. So, here's a visual of what we believe those enhanced setbacks, or newly created side setbacks anyway, would generate. And here, you have two houses that are relatively close together, but they have that positive drainage away from it. It gives them a little room for a swell in between. So, what does this look like visualized within the UDO? This is the dimensional standards table that we have within the Unified Development Ordinance. This outlines things like your minimum lot size, maximum density in a lot of cases, floor area ratio on through your minimum rear setback. So, we would differentiate between VC. We essentially create two subcategories, VC non-residential and VC residential. So, on the VC non-residential, we would not impact anything aside from the maximum density, because under a non-residential situation, you're not going to have any associated density. So, that would be the one modification we make there, and then everything we just discussed, we would instill in the VC residential category here where we implement, where we take the existing density, we leave that alone that's permitted, but we would create that floor area ratio at .35, the impervious cover ratio at .5, and then you adjust that maximum building height from 45 to 35. Your minimum front yard setback would be 20 feet, and then your maximum front setback would be eliminated. Then you get to the side setback of seven-and-a-half feet, and your rear setback of 10. So, we have discussed this with the Planning Commission. That was at the direction of city council at your July 2nd meeting, in which a motion was made to present some potential modifications to our VC district to the Planning Commission. We discussed these changes with them at their meeting in July, on July 16th, and the Planning Commission is prepared to hold a public hearing on these changes at their August 20th meeting. If it gets through Planning Commission at their August meeting, a public hearing would tentatively be scheduled for city council at your September 18th meeting. So, that was a pretty quick presentation on some pretty significant changes to our VC district. I'm prepared to stand by for any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wine. Council questions or comments? Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much, Kevin. This is, I feel like I've been waiting for this forever. So, I appreciate it, and I appreciate the detail and the explanation as well. I just have a couple of questions. So, we got something in our packet before what we were going to see tonight, and I just have, I have one question. Under the septic systems, and I think I know kind of the answer. This is, I know it's Health Department and so forth, but there's a statement that says, you know, we're considering different adjustments to the septic, but this may not be feasible due to the functional requirements, and might need further research. Could you explain that to me? Just, is that, I mean, is...
Yeah. The biggest challenge for the city from a regulatory standpoint when it comes to septic systems are the fact that they lie outside of our authority to regulate. That authority lies, as enabled by the state, with the Department of Health. So, these changes that I presented before you all this evening, it's a short-term change, but there are some longer-term goals that we have, that longer-term goals that we believe would really be more significant in achieving some of the desired outcomes in the villages. And that starts, on one hand, with the comprehensive plan and adoption of that, and we'd be able to dig into these villages a little further through a planning process. Part of that would be investigating what we can do from a zoning perspective as it relates to septic systems. Do we establish setbacks for mound systems, things like that?
Right. Okay. Thank you. And again, I kind of felt like I knew what that meant, but I just wanted to make sure. The only other, I just have a comment, and this, you brought up the 2045 comprehensive plan, and I think, and I, you know, you all know the language far better than I do, but I want to make sure that the language in the 2045 comprehensive plan regarding villages and what we're doing in the villages will support clearly these modifications if we get these approved, so that there's no conflict. Do you understand what I'm saying? I mean, you know, we want the comprehensive plan and any change in the, any change in the dimensional standards to agree with each other, so that there's like no loopholes. Is that, yeah?
Understood. And one of the first priorities upon adoption of the comprehensive plan is going directly into the village plans. And as we discussed with each of you, as it relates to the villages, I think we found out a lot really through the comprehensive plan update process. Folks really appreciate the villages, but we also recognize that they are unique in and of their own right, and having a one-size-fits-all zoning category doesn't necessarily align with our goals.
Right. Perfect. Thank you. And again, I really appreciate it. I think, you know, from my point of view, the, there are positive things about having new development within any neighborhood, and I don't think anybody's wildly against, you know, actual new houses. It's just when they impact the neighboring properties in negative ways. I think that, and I hope and pray that these modifications are going to help address that. So, thank you all, and thanks staff so much. I know this has been a kind of a deep dive, but I appreciate it. Thanks.
Councilman Johnson?
Mine's easy. Kevin, how, if we approve this and pass it right away and it moves forward, how much is in the pipeline now that will not be affected, that is going, you know, that's going forward right now? Because obviously, this will not affect what's there at the time today, or what's already been built, correct?
That's correct.
But how much is in the pipeline? Is there, will there be a push for people to go ahead and do something quickly before this comes forward if they, if it's going to affect how they are treated as they build? Just curious.
I don't know the answer to that question.
I know. It's a hard one, but it's, how much would you propose is in the pipeline?
So, as it relates to our villages, it's not like a rezoning, or you have an approved preliminary subdivision associated with it. So, there's really no, no number. A lot of that is predicated on sometimes boundary line adjustments between properties, things like that, to get a buildable property. That's something, we could maybe work with the assessor's office to get some additional data for vacant properties within the VC. That would give us an idea of the potential, but it's not a database that we keep on the VC zone.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilman Rector?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to piggyback a little bit on what councilperson Butler Barlow was talking about, and, you know, obviously, this is all designed to try to mitigate the impacts of infill on existing properties. And if you can go back to your slide that you had with the benefits of there, that, yes. Your example here has basically both houses set at the same elevation. So, this works pretty well in this scenario, but when you're doing the infill, as you pointed out in the beginning, one house is at a lower elevation, and the next house is, the infill house is at a higher elevation. Is this same scenario going to work in that particular situation, or is it, I mean, because if you drop that house down, it looks like all the water from the higher elevation house is still going to slope down and run to the lower elevation house. I mean, you know, water is lazy. It seeks the path of least resistance.
So, the hope there is from a setback perspective that allowing a little bit more distance, creating a little bit more land to grade off will hopefully benefit and lead to an improved situation. Will it always? You're right. It really depends on the elevation of those existing homes next to it, and what their elevation is relative to the adjacent property line.
Councilon, any other questions or comments? Mr. Wine, thank you for your presentation. Thank you for the staff's effort in putting together what councilperson Butler Barlow referred to as probably kind of long overdue and definitely welcome. So, we do have the means to address some of the infill development issues that we have had. I've got a few questions for you. Within the villages, is there a typical lot size? I mean, my experience with the very older lots, a lot of them were very narrow, like 25 by 150, and then a couple of them together, maybe 50 by 150. If you go down Main Street, like, or Galwin Boulevard adjacent to the dealership, a lot of those older lots were 50 by 150. Is that typical with most of the villages, or do they vary a lot?
They vary a lot. They were all plotted at different times, so it's, there's no one pattern that kind of stands out there. But, what we see from a, from a minor subdivision standpoint, it seems that the overall lot width target in the VC tends to be about 40 feet wide to give yourself a pretty decent building footprint. But, but the majority of what we see narrow are lots that are deep, that are deeper than your traditional lot.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at, and, you know, if that's the case, I mean, if it's 50 by 150, it's 7,500 square feet, and the 35%, give me one second, I'll get back to it. The 35% maximum permitted floor area ratio, is that on the, based on the total lights, lot size, or the impervious cover ratio as well?
That is based on the building itself, so the square footage of the structure. So, this would be, on a 10,000-square-foot lot, you would be capped at a 3,500-square-foot home.
So, it's based on the total lot size?
It's based on the total lot size. Yes, sir.
Okay. And when it comes to impervious space, I know, having dealt somewhat with that issue, especially, you know, just using the Outer Banks, for example, I mean, they are, I mean, really strict as far as impervious space, and impervious space for solid concrete is different than impervious space. You could use a substitute where you have the little... You could use a substitute where you have the little squares and it uses less impervious space, so are we going to do something similar to that where different scenarios have relative impervious space ratios, maybe?
Potentially. That's more in the realm of public works and stormwater.
Is that a building code deal? Yeah, well, I mean, like decks, if you put down a deck on the ground, it's going to have a different impervious space. So like I had a cottage that I wanted to add something to the back, I had to, I had to remove the solid driveway, a percentage of the solid concrete driveway, and replace it with the type that has the blocks that allow runoff within it. So I assume it's something, you know, similar to that. And if we do pass this, and there's been a lot of discussion about the uniqueness of the individual villages, especially as it applies to comprehensive plan. So conversations I've had with folks is that, you know, we need to get the comprehensive plan passed before we talk about the individual villages, because it's hard, you couldn't really set parameters with individual villages until you ensure that those parameters would adhere to the comprehensive plan and the thought process as far as the comprehensive plan was concerned. Do you think there would be any need to tweak this up a little bit? We like the term tweak, tweak is the word. Tweak it up a little bit as we look at each individual village? Is that even feasible? So we set this as a guideline, and then we get to a particular village, and that village, as far as the geographical layout, as far as the lot size and that sort of thing, maybe could we expand or can we adapt this somewhat to an individual village, so a code within a code? I don't even know, maybe I'll direct that question to the city attorney.
You would have to create a new zoning district for each village if you wanted to do that. Because everything, everything that is zoned VC needs to have the same requirements. So if you want to have different restrictions for different villages, then each village needs its own zoning district.
Okay, so it'd be a little can of worms, yeah. Okay, but it is feasible, okay. I was just checking to see, you know, you know, I've learned a long time ago, life seems to be about opportunities and options, so I was just wondering what options we would have, you know, moving forward, if we could, it's kind of a justin for each village specifically. Okay, question, we got another one? Vice Mayor Ward?
Kevin, I want to understand something. We saying now with these villages, this the way we're going to go when you're building or something, the dimension? So you're telling me?
Yes.
Okay. I have a problem. I don't see too much difference in these villages in Pewsville. I don't see it, I mean, you all can look at me like you want, but I don't see it, okay? Still got a lot of property left in Pewsville. So now the people, now the developers that build the same way they're doing now in Pewsville, they know Pewsville not on this list. So in other words, they, what restrictions they have in Pewsville? I don't understand. You got this in front, that's fine. Okay, I don't want to get, well, I don't care, okay. What I see is this. I don't have Pewsville here, right? I see Chucker Tuck, what is Chucker Tuck? I see Oakland, Sandy Bottom, and Hobson. I could thought that all was Chucker Tuck. So in other words, I mean, I don't see, Chucker Tuck is Chucker Tuck, but you got individual communities, okay? We got Pewsville, they don't have individual, individual communities, but we got some of the same situations. Now, I know we doing, we've done great, good jobs, and they don't preach, well, they don't see what we doing and what we about to do, but we still have a whole lot of woods back there where people are going to build. And they come to Pewsville, they don't have that, this restriction. Am I right? I mean, do they have it? No?
So you're correct, and there's no VC zoning in Pewsville. However, the majority of Pewsville is zoned RM. That's our residential medium-density zoning district. So a lot of these restrictions that we discussed today are already in place in Pewsville.
I understand that too. But what I'm saying to you, a lot of things were done when it was a county that we are trying to correct. So some of the things have gone on, we should be able to correct that because they got the same problem. I mean, what I'm seeing, you know, I got a letter that I wasn't, appreciate what somebody said, but I'm gonna address that later on. But the fact is, when I see these villages, I see Pewsville have some of the same situations. And you're saying to me that they don't have these guidelines.
The zoning in Pewsville is largely RM, and there are restrictions associated with that. The VC district was created in 1999 as a result of the adoption of the UDO. There were certain areas of the city through the comprehensive plan that was adopted that were designated as villages at the time. I was not a part of that conversation, I'm not sure many of you all were. But at that time, that is where areas were identified as villages, and thus they were accompanied with that VC zoning when it was created.
Will you say, who identified these areas?
They were identified as the comprehensive plan that was a precursor for the UDO adoption in 1999.
The state or the city?
The city would have adopted that.
Okay, now what I'm saying, what I'm saying is this, when I see, that's me, I don't see nothing in Northern Suffolk, just no more. And when I see Chucker Tuck, Oakland, Sandy Bottom, Hobson, Whalleyville, Holland, everything's down here.
I think, Vice Mayor, if I could just interject something?
Well, I don't know, that's why I'm asking him the question. I'm not mad with you, I'm just saying, I got to deal with this for my, you know...
I think what, if I hear you correctly, I think what you're saying is that the folks in Pewsville have a lot of the same issues that are being experienced in those communities that are designated and zoned VC. So the zoning was done in 1999, so the question would be, you'd basically have to look at rezoning, something that is currently RM to VC, to be able to pick up the same protections that the VC is going to offer to address the issues in Pewsville.
You said it perfectly. What I'm saying, let's look at the time, 1999. A lot of things wasn't done properly for these communities. Now, we have a chance to do that, that's what I'm just saying. I understand that, I'm not talking, that's why I asked you what year. Okay, who done it? The city, we can change anything. So when I talk with them, I want to at least give them opportunity, do you want to be this, or you don't want to be in a part of the village? But we just can't sit and have some of the same situations going on in a, in a community that we know of, and the developers come in there, do whatever they want without no guidelines. I don't think that's fair, if I'm saying it right, I don't think that's fair. Because we have, we have it right now, and they still, they still barking about the same water system, drainage and everything, so we're going to let them, and we got everybody in the south, well, nobody up there.
Mr. Manager, would you like to direct?
Well, I can try to address it two different ways, and I think you started out there. Of course, Vice Mayor, as Kevin and the mayor just said, there is different zonings in the Pewsville area. They, within the UDO, also have different lot sizes, which are larger than the VC lot sizes. They also have different, I believe, Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong anywhere here, they also have ratios on, for impervious, under that type of zoning, if it's RLM. So what we can do, I can get in our next direct report, we can come in, we can sit down and go over the zonings there that you have in Pewsville, and we can maybe walk through what those restrictions are.
I'm fine with that. I just want to know that we can do that without just voting on this, no underscoring. You know, you talk about 1999, we had our houses, talk about 1999, we had paper screens, some of that stuff is not no more. So I'm not too much engaged in what, you know, they still have some problems out there. And I just want to make sure that, you know, maybe Chucker Tuck, Hobson, things that we are trying to make things better, I just want to make sure Pewsville, understand Pewsville people have some of the same similarities. That's all, that's all I want to make sure.
And I think what would be good if we could, we didn't have the comparison of that tonight for you, but we can get that.
Okay, that's no problem, I'm good with that, that's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Butler-Barlow, would you still like to speak?
Well, I just wanted to, I'm trying to clarify, and I understand what you're saying, and I, and I appreciate what you're saying, because I, and I agree with what you're saying. But we're talking about really two separate things. We're talking about village zoning, which is only in these areas that are listed in this report. And the areas that we consider villages, like Pewsville and all of them, Crennan Eclipse, Driver, we consider all of those villages, but none of them has any village center zoning. So we're just addressing the zoning dimensional standards in particular communities that have this zoning. And the, unfortunately, it's village center and village, and it is, it's complicated and it's not unconnected, but, but the discussion in the comp plan of how we deal with each village on an individual basis is very important and is tied to this discussion, but it's once removed from the dimensional standards issue, so I think I maybe just made it even more confusing. Sorry.
And Vice Mayor, to Councilmember Butler-Barlow's comments, it's, this is just going to affect VC zoning. You're, if I understand you correctly, your end game is that Pewsville and some of these other areas, like Pewsville and Driver, and you just mentioned another one too, which is a great example, they are not zoned VC, so they're not, they don't have the same protection. So if you would get with the city manager, and maybe we could come up with a way that we could put some of these protections in place, be it a rezoning or possibly even changing some of the UDO within that RM designation, based on lot size or what have you, but that would be something that staff could take a look at.
Okay, I understand that too, but I just want to say, earlier someone said that the lingo, you think Pewsville people understand VC zoning? All they know about flooding, that's what they're going to tell, talk to me about, okay? So I got to break it down to whether it's VC zoning and this, I just went back then, and they don't see that, they just don't see that. I mean, when you go to the civic league, they talk about certain things have not been done to them, for them. So you give them anything new, they think that's a cop-out. Where did this come from? Because maybe before, they wasn't shared the information that we have now. And I have, I mean, I'd be a part of, I understand that. And they go back to 1990, they go back, and I can't tell them why this didn't happen and that didn't happen. Now here we go, we talking about flooding, and they still have flooding. That, you know, I just want to say, you know, give me something to tell them. Okay, well, y'all not in this, and that's fine, but that's why this community is, and they have some of the same similarities. Whatever you can do with that, I'm fine with it. At least I can have someone come and talk to them about it, at least they got a better understanding.
Council, any other questions or comments? Mr. Wine, thank you very much for your presentation, and we look forward to addressing this again hopefully next month.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our work session. We do have a need for a closed session. Madam Clerk, could you please read the motion for consideration?
Pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-371188 and A1, the consultation with legal counsel employed by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the legal advice of such counsel, and the discussion, consideration, or interviews prospective candidates for appointment and the assignment, appointment, and performance of specific public officers or appointees of the city, specifically the appointments as shown on the attached list for term, for vacancies, or term expirations for the community policy and management team, the downtown advisory committee, the early childhood development commission, the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, the human services advisory board, the local board of building code appeals, the Paul D. Camp Community College Board, the sister cities commission, the Southeastern Virginia Alcohol Safety Action Program, the Southside Network Authority, the Suffolk Redevelopment Housing Authority, the Tidewater Youth Services Commission, and the Western Tidewater Regional Jail.
Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve, ma'am.
A motion for approval, Councilman Fawcett. Do I have a second? Councilman Rector?
Second.
Second from Councilman Rector, is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepared to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting is adjourned, and we will reconvene at 6:00 PM.